After being after six forty-five, I would like to call the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three school committee meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Um, our next order of business is a recognition for the Byrd and Johnson Middle School Sneak Peak leaders.
Yes, wow, I'm so glad that you all are here. This is a great turnout. So as you know, Byrd and Johnson Middle School holds a sneak peek at the end of the summer to really show our incoming sixth graders to both Byrd and Johnson Middle School. Next year will be the new combined middle school. So I don't want to steal your thunder, so I hear that we have Camden Trezel and Etta McPhee who will be speaking for our eighth grade leaders who are here tonight. So we will call them up. You can go right up to the podium there.
Hello, my name is Etta McPhee.
I'm Camden Trezel. And we are some of the eighth grade leaders of Johnson Middle School.
The eighth grade leaders at JMS are a group of students who help to model the core values for all grades. These core values are having grit, being invested, being grateful, being innovative, and being compassionate. This school year, we have so far assisted grade six students at sneak peek and participated in Start With Hello Week. Next week, we will be guiding parents at our open house.
As Etta said, we started the year at sneak peek. We were able to help out the teachers as they introduced the sixth graders to the school. This week is Start With Hello Week. On Monday, we stood our front and greeted everyone as they walked in. Yesterday, we spent lunch with sixth and seventh graders, ended conversation starters, and hung out with them at recess.
The main goal we have is to grow as leaders and take what we have learned into our future as we graduate for JMS. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, if those of you who are here wouldn't mind, we'll go right down the line and if you could just say your name for us so we know who's present with us tonight?
Rosie Spear.
Molly Diggitt.
Byron Ball.
Zoe Portia.
Camilla Suriel.
Naomi Price.
Sophia Michelle.
Nikki Maloney.
Sophie McKenzie-Martin.
Sadie Murphy.
Becky Brony.
Camden Trezel.
Logan Kennedy.
Elena Shumman.
Bonnie St. Sophie Buchanan.
You should over there.
Alice Euberry.
Billy Sherard.
I have a mutual interest in asking both, Jessica Ford, Kate Connor.
Thank you, and everyone pay attention to those names. I have a feeling they won't be the last time we hear them um, in school committee meetings. Questions or comments from the committee? Mrs. Rogers?
So my daughter went through the sneak peek at Johnson and she had such a good time and it was such an awesome thing to get her excited to go to middle school. So thank you so much for what you did for her and for all the kids.
Dr. Goff?
Um, yes, thank you. I mean, it's really important. I think people really underestimate that day of sneak peek. It just provides our students, like Adrian mentioned, with another opportunity and you've never seen students so stressed who can't open their lockers, right? That seems to be the big piece. Schedules, just getting them around the building. So I know you've really eased anxiety for that transition and I really hope that you continue to stay in those leadership roles. Raise your hand if you're... So you're all eighth graders going to the high school, right? So when you go to the high school, you know, there will be students who will be helping you next year. And you know, I'd like to publicly thank those high school students that helped with the back to school. So you'll kind of be in those sixth grade issues going up, so you know how they feel. And then hopefully you'll continue to be those leaders when the incoming freshmen come in. So thank you very much.
Anything else? Would you all like to come up and, uh, I'm gonna rephrase that because I know that your families would love for you all to come up and stand in front of us and get a nice photo that they can text to your grandparents. So come on up.
You're on TV, guys. Keep smiling.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. And if you would like to stay and listen to the principals talk for a while, you're more than welcome. But I have a feeling you all have other things you want to devote your time to. So thank you again. We'll pause for a second um, for anyone who'd like to exit. Thank you again.
I mean, the orientation was excellent.
Yeah.
Were you working a table? Were you in the gym or?
Oh, I wasn't here. I was in the, I was in Europe when that happened, so.
Nice.
Alright, um, the next order of business is the Walpole High School student report. We are delighted to welcome back Favour Nyeende as our, uh, one of our representatives this year. Take it away, Favour.
Hi, um, good evening. Uh, my name is Favour Nyeende and I'm happy to be back here in my junior year. Um, my report is a bit on the shorter side than usual since the year is just starting and many great things are on the way. So it's a new school year and students have made a successful transition from summer break, especially the freshmen who got the extra opportunity to know the school well through freshman orientation. Parents will also get the chance to acquaint themselves on back to school night, which will be next Thursday at six thirty PM. This year, the school brought back an old tradition of summer reading and students got the opportunity to discuss what they read yesterday during our intervention period. And additionally, the seniors last Friday were able to enjoy a sunrise together and are ready to finalize their final year of high school. Overall, the future is looking bright for this new year. Fall sports are also in full swing and many teams are beginning to see the start of success, which includes girls volleyball and girls soccer. Clubs are also beginning a new year and many have had their first team meetings this week, including the photography club, Spanish club, community service club, best buddies, Walpole High School UNICEF club, speech and debate club, as well as art club. Overall, the school year is moving smoothly and great things are on the horizon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Favour. Any questions or comments for Favour?
Nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
We know as the year goes on, you'll have more to share. So, um, you also are welcome to stay and listen to the principals or attend to any other business that you might have this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Favour. Okay, um, on to new business, beginning with the opening of school reports.
Right, I guess I didn't tell you who's starting first, huh? Why don't we start with Daniel Feeny, preschooler. Does she?
Yay!
That was great to see the eighth grade leaders.
Yeah.
From Fisher. Amazing. Um, good evening, welcome. Um, my name is Julie Martin. I'm the director of the Daniel Feeny preschool. So, um, thank you for being here and good evening to families, community members, administrators, school committee. Um, it has been an exciting and energy-filled first eight days of preschool as we welcomed eighty-two students and families to the preschool. Um, we currently, of those eighty-two, we have thirty-seven students who are receiving services, special education services, as we are the public preschool and the gateway to the district for our youngest learners. Um, so those first eight days have been filled with relationship building, learning routines, rituals, making friends, turn-taking, learning about feelings, each other's families. And in fact, I just came from our, what's now our annual popsicles at preschool event. So my pants are a little covered in chalk. So, uh, as far as the preschool, as you know, we've continued to grow and we're fortunate this year with the support of administration and Dr. Quealy that we have, have been able to add an additional occupational therapist who will be working with us once a week, um, to, uh, to help support our students in addition to the full-time OT we have. Um, and, uh, as the gateway to the district, we continue to adapt and respond proactively to meet the needs of the youngest students in our community and supporting our families by providing resources on how to support language, play and social skills, find motor skills, and regulation skills at home. And you know, anecdotally, we had our first PAC meeting last night and we had families arrive and it's their child's first entry into education and, and some of the families that came, it's their first entry into education in the United States. They, they're newcomers and so they're, we're helping to, you know, guide them to learn about how does public school work and what is preschool? We don't have preschool where I'm coming from. And so being able to be proactive and, and address and support our families. Um, we've created a robust and highly differentiated program to reflect the needs of our students with special education needs and providing developmentally appropriate learning activities for all, for all of our students. Um, next week, we have our curriculum night and as I mentioned last night, our PAC meeting. So we always are thinking about new ways to engage our families, build strong relationships. Our families are always asking us that they're eager to connect with each other. Um, so we're brainstorming last night at PAC about, you know, what are some ways I can get the, the parents together, maybe without the kids, so they can start building relationships because one of the things that make us unique is we have, you know, all four of the elementary schools start with us before they branch out. And having the opportunity to introduce those families at a young age is, is a, is a great gift, I think. Um, as far as our focus for PD this upcoming year, um, our staff, we're going to be focusing on the implementation of the new IEP, which the Department of Elementary and Special Education has rolled out and implementation for next fall. Um, so that will be a focus amongst, you know, for myself with Dr. Quealy, along with the district team chairs, and then bringing that PD back to the staff and incorporating it throughout the year about what that will look like and how we'll implement that thoughtfully at the preschool level. Um, and so we're looking forward to that work because it's a great opportunity to really look and reflect on how, you know, we, we write IEPs and, and I think there's always room to make improvement there. Um, as our curriculum, we continue to work, um, you know, primarily on the Massachusetts pre-K learning and place standards, really focusing on the social, emotional, the regulation that has to come first before everything else. And so there's a lot of focus using the zones of regulation, using social thinking. Throughout the year, we will implement foundations, Haggerty, um, early phonics, handwriting without tears, and then focusing on science and social studies. And we also continue to work around being inclusive of all the families in our community and our students um, and engaging in using materials that will be reflective of the families in our community. Um, our, we've, I say this every year, but our families are incredibly supportive of us and our students and very trusting of us. Um, and I think that's a huge responsibility that we have as well and we are grateful for their partnership. Uh, we continue to use communication, including smores, now the App to G app. Teachers use, um, things like photo circles, some are using Class Dojo, Twitter, in order to keep families informed and updated. Um, and lastly, I would just like to thank, um, our custodial staff as well as all the central office who really are behind the scenes helping all of this go. Um, and I couldn't do my job without, without everyone's support. Um, everybody here, everybody behind me, Mary, of course. So, um, I thank you. I thank you for your ongoing support and you are always welcome to come and see us anytime.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, any questions for Ms. Martin?
It's great. A lot of fun. Right, Bridget? Whenever, what do you say?
Oh, if you're ever having a bad day, go to the preschool.
Go to the preschool, yes. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Alright, let's have the elementary principals up. It's like the three Bs here, Mr. Barner, Mr. Bemis, and Ms. Puller, so. And Mr. Dearborn could not be, he actually has a, uh, a night, a school night for, for his child.
Hi, good evening, school committee members. My name's Jen Viller. I'm the new principal over at Elm Street. It's nice to meet all of you. Um, on behalf of the elementary school principals, I want to thank you for inviting us tonight to share a bit about the opening of school, a school year that's filled with potential and hope. Across the district and the four elementary schools, we welcomed one thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine students back to school in kindergarten through grade five classrooms. Boyden with four hundred and nine, Elm with four forty-seven, Fisher with four hundred seventy-four, and Old Post Road with four hundred sixty-nine students. The summer was busy hiring for educator positions in each of our school communities. We want to share our gratitude for all those who participated on interview teams, as well as for Dr. Han and his team who held an engaging orientation for new staff that left participants energized and equipped to start their school year successfully. Also, we want to thank all of the Walpole Public School educators who have stepped up to be mentors to all of our new staff, providing connections and support during the transition one experiences when starting in a new place. Each school has been establishing and building relationships within the community through our partnerships with each of our PACs and events such as ice cream socials and opening of the year PAC meetings. Additionally, our classrooms, through the strong efforts of our educators, are warm welcoming spaces that seek to provide a safe and affirming learning environment for all of our students. We all understand the critical importance of strong homeschool relationships and look forward to continuing to foster partnerships with all families in service of improving student engagement, growth, and achievement. We also want to take this opportunity to share our gratitude for our custodial staff and building maintenance department who helped prepare our buildings for students and staff to return, and to Officer Hart, Rebel, and the Walpole Police Department and the Walpole Fire Department who've been supporting us in practicing our back to school emergency preparedness protocols and procedures. Looking ahead, we're all excited and deep into preparations for each of our open house and curriculum nights. These opportunities in the coming weeks will allow for families to engage with our educators to learn more about the curriculum and instruction that is offered to our children.
I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Barner.
Good evening. I'm David Barner, principal at Old Post Road School. Adding to the excitement of the new school year is having teachers and staff collaborate during our first two days to plan for their students. We have strong curriculum materials and resources in all content areas that teachers have implemented in the past few years and continue to develop and enhance through these professional development opportunities. The focus of professional development includes providing engaging curriculum, differentiated instruction, and ongoing assessments for all students, specifically to provide personalized learning through flexible instructional practice that fosters growth for all students. Teachers frequently utilize qualitative and quantitative data to inform instruction, improve practice, and meet the needs of their students with the high expectations that we share. Our curriculum and professional development goals are aligned with the district's strategic plan and our school improvement plans. Over the course of the year, the opportunities for professional development and collaboration include seven early release days for staff training, one full day of PD, weekly grade level team meetings, monthly curriculum meetings, monthly staff meetings. We are also fortunate to have built a team of coaches and specialists who collaborate to support teachers as we move teaching and learning forward. These include our literacy specialists, ELA curriculum coordinator, math coaches, and digital learning coaches. In English Language Arts, the primary areas of focus of professional development in the upper grades this year is vocabulary acquisition and expanding our word study curriculum. While in the lower grades, the focus is strengthening the use of decodable readers. This summer, there was a summer R and D that identified three to five core texts to support the history and social science standards. Those texts will be incorporated this year. In grade five, we'll be learning more about the investigating history curriculum that was developed by the DESE. In math, we continue to roll out the Bridges curriculum with a focus on all teachers developing the number corner routines that build number sense and flexible thinking around mathematical operations. We're aiming to increase the use of workspaces that provide for practice and repetition to develop conceptual understanding and procedural fluency. Teachers have valuable student performance data that will be used throughout the year to differentiate instruction to support the students in their classrooms. Digital tools and benchmark assessments are used for data collection and monitoring student progress. Some of those frequently used are iReady, iReady forefront elevation, MCAS data, along with teacher-collected qualitative data and student work. Principals are grateful for the work of the teachers, specialists, and support staff as they have worked hard during the process of implementing curriculum tools that meet the needs of our students. Additionally, we'd like to thank you for your support with our goal to have every student experience success. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Bemis.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Brian Bemis. I'm the principal of Fisher Elementary School. And continuing with our discussion of professional development this year, our educators will also be taking advantage of opportunities related to diversity, equity, and inclusion in social, emotional learning. Our teachers and staff continue to be, to be very passionate about DEI and SEL. We all work very hard to establish and maintain school cultures that are welcoming and safe for all who enter. As a guiding principle, the Walpole Equity Statement is the driving force behind our work in both DEI and SEL. It states, "Walpole Public School community members have a shared responsibility to create spaces in curriculum that embrace diversity, learning, and belonging. In addition to cultivating relationships with our students, we must acknowledge and work to eliminate bias in order to affirm and promote inclusivity. The diversity, equity, and inclusion goal of our strategic plan that will also guide our PD and conversations is that all school personnel demonstrate a high level of cultural proficiency as evidenced by active promotion of diversity in all aspects of instruction, learning, and participation, thus ensuring equity for all and full inclusion of members of the educational and greater community." The elementary schools will be focusing on our continued collaboration with the DEI task force and our building representatives to provide grade level or school-wide opportunities to students and to staff around learning about individual differences and celebrating our work. Examining our curricular resources through a lens of DEI, working with the school counselors to create age-appropriate counseling lessons that are deliberate around DEI. Another aspect of our PD will be to align our teaching practices with the Department of Education's Standards on Cultural Proficiency, where students demonstrate respect for and affirm their own and others' differences. Educators and staff use a variety of culturally responsive practices and communication strategies to support every family. We regularly communicate with families about student learning and performance while demonstrating understanding of and respect for home languages, cultures, and values. Social, emotional learning is also infused in all our teaching throughout every school day. Our SEL goal is to foster and strengthen the social, emotional well-being of the school community in order to develop responsible and engaged citizens. We will provide professional development for staff to effectively support students' social, emotional well-being by dedicating time for teachers to discuss individual students at upcoming fall transition meetings, provide opportunities for staff to share resources, lessons rooted in SEL competencies, and share effective SEL strategies with colleagues. Workshops will be provided at EdCamp centered around SEL and DEI for staff and students. As a result of our efforts promoting diversity, equity, inclusion, and social, emotional learning, teachers and staff will be able to positively impact our students through the use of inclusive practices while developing the self-awareness, self-control, and interpersonal skills that are vital for school, work, and life success. The elementary principals and I would like to thank all the educators and staff that work collaboratively and tirelessly to provide a welcoming and safe environment for all who visit, work, and learn at our schools every day. The elementary principals and I are proud to report that we are off to a great start and we'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for the elementary school team?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to say welcome to Jen Viller, the district. It's exciting to have you. And thank you to all the principals. Sounds like you're off to a good start.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's have the middle school principals. You have to follow that.
Yeah.
I'll let you introduce yourselves.
I don't think there's much going on at the middle school level.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carrie Ruggiero, principal of Johnson Middle School, and I'm happy to be here along with Principal Connor.
Oh, for our middle school, thank you.
To provide an update regarding the middle schools. So this year, Byrd Middle School welcomed four hundred and two students, while Johnson Middle School welcomed four hundred and eighteen students. As you heard from our amazing eighth grade leaders that were here tonight, we kicked off the year with grade six sneak peek programs that were held at each school. This programming provided opportunities for our new students to meet the teachers, review their schedules, tour the building, and practice opening that combination lock. The program helped ensure a smooth and seamless transition for our newest middle school learners. We also held open door days and scheduled visits to give any students, any new student and their families the chance to come and get a quick tour of the building, meet administration, and ease any anxiety they might be feeling about starting a new school year. Teachers and students had a great first few weeks of school. Staff kicked off back to school with professional development, planning, training, and collaboration with colleagues. When the students arrived back to school, they engaged in activities to promote positive relationship with staff and peers that included many team-building opportunities. Teachers devoted time for students to get to know each other and establish a safe and welcoming classroom environment with high expectations for behavior, attitude, and effort. The energy and enthusiasm from students was fantastic, even with that heat wave.
Our custodians worked tirelessly in the heat of the summer to get our buildings ready. As usual, they did a great job making everything shine in preparation for the arrival of students and staff. Like many of our colleagues, our summer was filled with reviewing resumes, holding interviews, and looking for great candidates to fill vacancies at our schools. At Johnson, that amounted to six new hires, while Byrd is welcoming four new members to the team. By all accounts, this group has shown great promise as educational staff and we're very pleased to have them join our learning communities. The construction of the new Walpole Middle School is ongoing. During the summer, Vertex Construction Management and Fontaine Brothers continue to enclose the steel structure that was erected last year. The brick facade is taking shape and the interior framing is underway. The BMS teachers had the chance to take a quick tour of the building as we started the year and they certainly loved what they saw so far. And the JMS staff will be able to have a tour in the next few weeks. The staff parking lot has been paved in line and there were additional parking spaces added along the side of the driveway. I've been communicating campus changes to the BMS families on a regular basis and will continue to do so throughout the process. Two-thirds of our family have a lot of experience navigating the driveway already and our new grade six families are fast learners. Working with Fontaine Brothers and Vertex has been seamless and they're very responsive to our needs as a school. Whenever any issues or questions arrive, arise, they are quick to resolve it and they've been really great partners to work with on this project.
The first month of school seems to be flying by, but we are looking forward to some of our annual events, including our open house nights, which for both schools are planned for this coming Tuesday, September nineteenth.
And in addition, staff from BMS, Boyne Elementary, and Walpole High School have our meet and greet event at the Preserve on September twenty-fifth at five thirty PM.
The excitement is already building as we look ahead to bring both schools together to become one middle school. Along with central administration, specifically Dr. Goff and Dr. Han, we have already started a very thoughtful transition process of combining both buildings into one. This summer, some staff from both middle schools joined together to work on MTSS and formalizing the process and procedures that go along with it, common assessments, and executive functioning curriculum to support student success. We are bringing the Johnson Middle School and Byrd Middle School staff together on upcoming professional development days. upcoming professional development days, starting with the 22nd of September, where Johnson Middle School will host Byrd Middle School staff for professional development training on the new SMARTS executive functioning curriculum that ties directly into our MTSS for student success program at a Tier One. On October 6th, Byrd Middle School will host Johnson Middle School staff to continue our transition planning and collaboration and to tour the new building. We have also started planning to bring our students together with student council, PAC-sponsored events, and other really special opportunities. We are looking forward to spending time this school year, building relationships, fostering teamwork, and joining together for collaboration.
And as always, we would like to extend our appreciation for the continued support and guidance from you, the members of the school committee, Dr. Goff, Dr. Hahn, and the rest of central office and administration. We'd also like to thank the caring, creative, and dedicated educators who are the foundation of our school communities. We're looking forward to a great year and are very grateful for the opportunity to serve the students and the families of Walpole Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our middle school team? Comments?
I would just comment that it's exciting.
It is.
You know, it's a real, I could sense your energy, and we had a chance to tour the building this afternoon.
Yes.
So, you know, it's a very positive time to be in your shoes and in our shoes, so.
Yeah.
Except wear the right shoes.
Yes.
I went in sandals a few days ago.
Oh, no, no, no.
No one warned me.
My bad.
But they were very nice, and over the five inches of water put a plank down for me. Very exciting times. Thrilled to be a part of it.
Well, you two seem ready to take this act on the road.
I know.
So, thank you for the smooth presentation.
Okay, Mr. Imbush, Walpole High School.
I'm the tag team with, keep it short. Welcome back from the summer. Welcome to the new member. Looking forward to working with you too. There is much work completed during the summer months before the opening of school. A new retaining wall was constructed in the front of the school to replace the wall that was disintegrating. We also added some new plantings at the main entrance that look fabulous. A new running track was installed out on Turco Field. And a new air conditioning unit was installed in the cafeteria. This was a nice surprise for the students and staff, especially with the hot weather we have had so far this month. Our school opening this year went exceptionally well. On August 29th, we invited 205 of our incoming freshman students to attend our annual ninth grade orientation. These students enjoyed meeting their teachers and learning about our many clubs and activities. This is always a very positive experience for the ninth graders as it gives them the run of the school before the upperclassmen are in the building. We have six new staff members across the high school, and the energy they bring with them is outstanding. These staff include teachers, ESPs, and support staff, as well as our new assistant principal, Dr. Christina Kelleher Bianchi. We look forward to building strong professional relationships with them this school year. We also have five existing staff who have moved into new positions at the high school. It's really a very positive sign to see our staff successfully being promoted within the district. In extracurricular activities, we currently have 22 different sports teams representing 10 different fall sports and no less than 40 clubs and activities. To say that it is a busy place is an understatement. There is something for everyone to get involved with. I'd like to remind the community that our back-to-school night is next Thursday, September 21st. We invite all our parents to join us at the high school at 6:30 p.m. We're looking forward to another fabulous school year at Walpole High.
Thank you, Mr. Imbush. Any questions or comments on the high school?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, you're all dismissed.
They have to stay. They have to stay.
Go home and do your homework.
Yes. Thank you so much for being here with us. Thank you for the energy and positivity, and let's keep it going for 170-something more days, 60-something more days.
Sunday.
Thank you.
All right, next order of business is a capital update.
Yeah, I can start with that. Mr. Fisher just joined us because he was at the committee meeting, so, with Finance Committee, which was happening at the same time as our meeting, so, Mike, feel free to fill in afterwards or, you know, update us on how things went at your meeting. So as you recall, school committee voted to approve the Fall Town Meeting capital request on June 8th, and then Mike updated you at the last school committee meeting. So if you remember, those were the Crombrook replacements for $250,000, the Walpole HVAC replacement for $600,000, the access control for the school buildings for $100,000, and that's due to the fact that Mike secured a highly competitive grant for $140,000. The three elementary school HVAC installation design for $70,000, and we talked about the module of classrooms at Feeny Preschool on there for $800,000, but that's more on the five-year capital plan, so we can make people aware of that coming, you know, coming down the pike. So since then, we presented our request to the capital committee on August 30th, and they voted favorably for those, the requests that I just mentioned, and the capital budget committee presented to the finance committee this past Monday, and some of us were there, and they voted favorably for those items, so.
Anything to add, Mike?
I think you covered it well.
Any questions, Mrs. Galligan?
I would just add, the one thing that I thought was positive that came up is that, especially because of the heat, the conversation at the FinCom meeting was, you know, was about how warm the buildings had been. And there is a serious conversation about building the, a new HVAC system into any work we do at the high school, which would increase, you know, the town's commitment to what can be done at the high school. So it was said publicly at the FinCom meeting, and I thought that was a really good sign. Right, and even the town administrator was up there in the history ring on that, those hot days, too.
I would just, if I could just add, so, the meeting was just out, they were talking about the capital stabilization, so it was supported 12-0-0 from the FinCom to put in the additional $1,360,000. That brings up the balance to 5.2 million, which is pretty much earmarked toward the high school, which we know. Jim's goal is to do another round of about $1,100,000, and that will get up to about between $6 and $6.5 million. That would be the goal to fund that much of the project from capital stabilization when we're ready to go. And he did mention, and I'll mention it to everyone here, he's had conversations with a few of us in general about the support of the additional Chapter 70 money for at least one more year going into that capital stabilization to support the high school project, and he felt that it was favorable, like, we supported that idea. Obviously, things can change, things can happen, but there was a general support for, you know, putting Chapter 70 education funds toward the high school, so. Just want to mention that, but very supportive, and the HVAC came up again, and Jim talked about now, what is a $36, $37 million project, including the HVAC in that project, and that came up again, and was again supported 12-0-0.
Any other questions or comments for Mike?
I'll just add, you know, it's a cruel twist of fate for you, Mike, that the capital budget season coincides with the opening of school because it means you're at a lot of, you know, you have a lot of long days, and then you're having a lot of meetings in the evening, and it's busy. So we appreciate, you know, all of the time you spend, you and Dr. Goff, to make the case for our capital request and help the various boards understand the rationale behind them and why the priorities are what they are, and it's great that we're meeting with success and support from those boards, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next order of business is the Fails, Leach, Rogers, and Kunde Scholarship for 2023.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, as you know, that the scholarship applications will be available October 1st through the 31st, and the application can be found on our district website, and also if they need hard copies, they can come and see Mary at the superintendent's office. There's a couple of items here. If you remember from last year, and these were in your packets, we discussed updating the application. So one was a breakdown of the total cost for the year of college, so that was breaking down. There was a request for tuition, room and board, books, transportation, so that's done. And the other was a breakdown of scholarship and financial aid loans, and that, like, it was all lumped together, and I know that we had requested dividing that up so we could see what that was in terms of scholarships received versus loans received. It looks a little different in each form because the hard copy is easier to do, the Google form, it looks like it's a list, but that's just the only way you can do it, so that's just a little bit of the explanation. That's in your packets. And second, the scholarship meeting is scheduled for December 3rd at 6 o'clock, and I believe that's the same date as the school building committee meeting, which begins at 6:30. So we just need to think, we can either adjust the time, you know, if we keep the meeting as it is, that's going to impact three of us for that, or we can change the date, so if you want, Mary could send out a doodle poll. I don't know what people's thoughts about, you know, the date for that, but it looks like it falls on the same date as the school building committee.
Just to clarify, we're talking about December 12th, right? A Tuesday? The 3rd is a Sunday?
I'm sorry, December 12th. I'm sorry, December 12th.
Um, yeah, I think maybe a poll sooner rather than later, just because that's a highly busy time of year for everybody.
It's really busy.
But, um, yeah, it's always great to have everyone at those meetings. It's a nice, it's a nice activity to look at where our students are post-high school and see, you know, see where they're, what they're pursuing, and read in their essays about their growth and how they've discovered their passions and things, and I would remind anyone listening who's thinking of applying that sometimes the registrar's office at your university can be slow to get your financial aid records, so even if you're not writing your essay until the night before, make sure that you reach out to the registrar's office and give them plenty of time so that you don't miss the deadline for submitting your official records.
Okay.
Just one thing, Carrie.
Yes.
Just to go back, in case people don't know, Fails, Leach, Rogers, and Kunde scholarships are for current college students.
Yes.
So, you know, if that can get included in the notes, because sometimes people just don't know about it. It's for kids who have graduated from Walpole High School and are currently in college. Good point, and I have that, we have, we'll put in the school committee notes, and then I have it in as the superintendent update, exactly what it is, what the criteria is.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right, rolling right along. Like the principals mentioned, the students have been in for 10 days now, really smooth opening, as we mentioned despite the heat last week. It's great to see our classrooms come alive. Thank you to our administration and our staff for their hard work in preparation for the opening of schools. We welcome students, you know, moving in from neighboring towns, and those that return to Walpole Public Schools from charter schools, vocational schools, and our private schools. We also welcome families who move to Walpole from other states, example, Virginia, Florida, New York, I like to see where everybody's from, and from other countries such as Brazil, India, Guatemala, Ukraine, and most recently, the Dominican Republic. Dr. Hahn and I have already been out to the schools to greet and welcome students and the staff. In terms of safety and security, I continue to meet and communicate with Chief Kelleher, the Walpole Police Department. As you heard from the elementary principals, Officer Hart is in the process of setting up the critical response drills in our schools, and as our principals mentioned, please check schedules because the open houses are on the books for the next two weeks, and I'll have that also in my superintendent update. Thus far, our current student enrollment is 3,709. I'll kind of pass that down for you. Again, this is the preliminary enrollment. We, the number is still fluid. We're getting enrollments. I think Mary just got an email today for another enrollment. We have several students in preregistration. So this is just, this is very, this is preliminary. Once October 1st hits, then we'll be able to, I'll be able to update and get you those numbers. Something that's new, I'm seeking Walpole High School students to serve on a new superintendent student cabinet. This cabinet is a unique opportunity for Walpole High School students to share feedback, their experiences, and their perspectives on a variety of issues affecting students, schools, or the Walpole community, to share those with me. Through this cabinet, the Walpole High School students in grades nine through 12, they'll be able to voice their ideas, share their suggestions for improving our schools in the district, and to act as thoughtful leaders as they build their leadership capacity. Potential applicants for this cabinet are students who are concerned about the needs of all students and have the desire to ensure that Walpole Public Schools is focused on improvement. Selected students will be expected to attend the meetings and prepare for each meeting as needed. So I have more information, including meeting dates and times, that are on this application form. The applications are due Thursday, October 12th, by 5:00 p.m. Principal Imbush is sending that out to all of the Walpole High School students as well, so we'll just keep pushing it, so. Something new starting on the horizon. On September 22nd, which don't forget, that's an early release day, at 8:30 at the high school track, you can walk with the supers, Dr. Hahn and me. Really designed to continue our promoting community engagement, so people can come for a portion, stay for the entire time, and it's open to all community members. You do not have to be even a member of the Walpole Public School districts, and we'd love to have you. Finally, Dr. Hahn and I want to share with you our ending comments that we gave to our, to the Walpole Public School staff, opening on the morning of August 30th. Thank you, Carrie, for welcoming our staff and providing some wonderful words. Dr. Hahn and I thought that the committee in our community would just like to have a glimpse into the ways that our teachers make a difference, so we're going to read to you what we read to them to end our opening meeting.
All right, so to give you some context, Dr. Goff opened the staff meeting that morning by sharing her gratitude for the people in that auditorium and the impact that they make on students. So we know the power of gratitude, that feeling you get when you receive a thank-you note from a student or a parent at the end of a tough year. So with that in mind, we wanted to conclude that meeting by sharing our heartfelt gratitude for our staff by trying to capture just some of the ways that our staff makes a difference in Walpole Public Schools. During a time of historical educational turnover and staff growth in all of our schools, today we want to share our gratitude for the entire Boyden Elementary School staff that welcomed 27 new staff members to the school last year. The veteran Boyden staff ensured the new staff felt welcome, understood different routines, and had the resources needed to be successful. It took incredible collaboration and teamwork.
To the Fisher community, we are grateful for the outpouring of support, love, and kindness from the entire school community for a fifth-grade student who successfully battled cancer.
We are grateful for the unified sports team coaches and everyone who helped our students have a successful unified sports season.
We are grateful for the OPR staff last year that presented to their colleagues about the unique aspects of their roles and how they contribute to the learning environment. This was an opportunity for everyone to share the amazing expertise they bring, and for everyone to appreciate each other's contributions to the work we all do with our students.
We are grateful for the entire Elm staff who, five years ago, welcomed and supported a brand-new school principal. And while the loss of a building principal can be difficult, the Elm Street School team has extended that same hospitality and patience this summer to Principal Buller in her first year in Walpole Public Schools. Your thoughtful words and actions have helped ease the transition of one principal moving on to another principal new to our community.
We are grateful to the incredible staff at Daniel Feeny Preschool for their flexibility, cooperation, and collaboration, as the preschool recorded its largest number of students in school history during the 2022-2023 school year.
We are grateful for those at Walpole High School who have stepped up to teach our three new content classes for foundational multilingual learners in the ELE program, specifically Lisa Linden, Zacko, and Matt Kowalski, who have designed completely new curriculum to meet the linguistic and cultural needs of newcomers in the ELE program.
To all of our elementary teachers, reading and writing units of study, number corners, foundations, bridges, and hegarty, oh my, you are resilient teachers who continue to model for all of us the perseverance necessary to evolve and meet the needs of our students, even when that means adopting a brand-new curriculum.
We are grateful for the team of middle school
We are grateful for the team of middle school staff from Johnson and Byrd, specifically Jody Rourke, Lisa Seer, Sarah Junta, Leah Care, Katie Jingres, Amanda Darling, Tom Warren, BJ Burke, and Jill Masterson for their work over the summer on the MTSS programming at the middle school level to ensure that our students are receiving the best support possible.
We are grateful to Dave Wood, the Wapo High School head custodian, for his ongoing mentorship and support of Peter Clow as a part-time custodian at Wapo High. Pete has worked with Dave since before he graduated from our Career and Ed Program in 2013. Dave's commitment to and modeling of inclusive practices is a credit to who he is as a person and the benevolence he wishes to impact on our students.
Hey, Byrd Middle School, you deserve a special shout-out. We're grateful for the patience and the resilience of all the students, parents, and staff as we finished year one of the middle school construction project. There was a little dust, a little more noise, and a little less parking, and a whole lot of distractions. But everyone persevered and did not let the construction impact the learning.
Have you noticed we were struggling to find subs last year? We have too. So, we are very grateful to our building subs who cover every class that is asked of them. For everyone in the schools, including teachers, ESPs, specialist support staff, and administrators who had to cover classes last year to keep the learning going. A special shout-out to the James Butters of the world, who took on several roles at the high school last year, including long-term sub-business teacher, long-term sub-English teacher, ESP, and building substitute. He embraced each role with enthusiasm and always made it a worthwhile experience for the students.
We are grateful for all the Boydin School personnel and the Wapo Police and Fire Departments who didn't let a student's cancer diagnosis ruin his sixth birthday. From the escort and ride to school from the Police and Fire Departments, to the whole school welcome outside, to the party in the classroom, this student and family had an amazing time that they will remember forever.
I am grateful for my husband, Sean Goff, who puts up with the trials and tribulations of a superintendent for always planning my vacation. When I always say, "It's not a good time," in his response, "It's never a good time." And he books it anyways. And I do have a fantastic time. After all, you know what they say, happy wife.
Happy life.
No, happy Wapo Public School staff.
Grateful for the hard work by James Conley and his team to start a very successful work-study program at Wapo High School. This program will give some of our most vulnerable students the opportunity to successfully graduate high school while pursuing a non-conventional path. James's work this year and last year has set a very solid foundation which we can continue to build on.
We are grateful for all the little things that you do that sometimes and oftentimes go unnoticed.
The subtle smile to encourage the struggling student.
All the times you arrive early to prepare your lessons.
All the times you stay late to prepare your lessons.
The extra phone call home just to celebrate the accomplishments of one of your students.
The extra phone call to your home to say you're running late again.
The hug for your colleague who is having a long day.
Giving that kid another chance for the third time.
The fourth committee you joined to make our community a better place.
The time you stop by the new teacher's classroom just to check in before the end of the day.
The time you check to make sure your student had breakfast.
The Sundays that were never a day off.
The games you attended that made a student's weekend.
And the joy and passion you bring every day to this challenging work.
And while it would be almost impossible to capture all the things you do, please know.
We thank you.
We see you.
And we are truly grateful.
Nice. Very nice.
That's excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments? That was really cool.
Yeah, I, I just, I worry about morale, and I was just trying to think of how do you start the year? I think that's a fast, fantastic way, because it's, I don't know, it's, it's, I think it's a hard time for people in general right now, you know, and, but in education, I worry that some of the best people might be burning out. So, good for you, I thought that was awesome.
And I will say, as somebody who had the opportunity to witness it in person in that full auditorium, just how incredibly powerful it was, not only to hear Dr. Goff and Dr. Han's words, but to see all the head nodding and hear all of the cheers that erupted throughout that speech, people clapping for their colleagues and appreciating the recognition. It was really something, and it just, it reminded me how many amazing, amazing people we have in our schools and how lucky we are to have them and how lucky they are to have leaders who, who notice and see what they do every day and, and take the time out to let them know that it's seen and appreciated. So, it was wonderful.
Nice opening.
Yeah, it really was. All right, well, the first order of old business is an update on the middle school building project.
So, I, I don't have much to say, but a bunch of you visited today, so maybe I'll yield to you, but it's on time and on budget still.
And it looks fantastic. Anybody who was on the tour today want to comment?
I would just say we posted a lot of pictures to our individual school committee pages, and, you know, a picture tells a thousand words. So, there's videos and we were taking a ton of pictures.
We were basically tourists.
Not while we were walking, though.
No, right.
And with our right shoes on.
Eyes up when you're, when you're walking in the construction site. But yeah, it was, it was amazing, right, to see it go from an idea to lots and lots of paper and lots and lots of meetings to, to reality. And you can see the stairs the students are going to walk up and the classrooms where they're going to learn their science and their art and the stage where they're going to perform, and it was, it was really something cool, so. And a high school project update, Mrs. Sirek, was there a meeting?
No, next week.
Next week, okay.
Taking off next week, so next meeting we'll have an update.
Okay, terrific. We'll look forward to it. Subcommittee activity, have we had any subcommittee meetings so far?
Nope, just the, the attached list shows the changes that have been updated for school, the subcommittee membership.
Yes, yeah, so take a look at that, make sure it looks accurate to you, let me know if anything needs to be changed, and we'll let Mary know. All right, seeing no citizens present, we will move on to approval of warrants and budget transfers, donations, and minutes. Would somebody like to take the warrants?
Motion to approve the following warrants, payroll warrant 2407 PS. Should I go through all of them?
Uh, that's the only payroll warrant, correct? Okay, so we'll take that as a separate motion. So, motion by Mrs. Rogers, second. Second by Mrs. Sirek, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0.
Motion to approve the following accounts payable, warrants 244007, 224008, 224009, and 224010.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Rogers, second by Mrs. Sirek, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. And at this time of year, we also have an approval of budget transfers.
Mike, did you want to introduce this before? Seems it takes to just give a little background reminder of the school committee.
Yeah, so, we talked about this last year during the school year, the idea of, and it's supported by some guidance and regulations from the ESE to be, for the sake of transparency to the school committee, to the public, that we report out our budget transfers from within the school department. So, the, what I really want to emphasize is that these aren't net increases or decreases to the overall budget. The budget is set when we vote our budget by town meeting, and it's approved and granted to us. That's our appropriated budget, it doesn't change. But these are transfers within that larger budget. So, you know, you do your best job to create a budget that has allocations in certain, we'll call them buckets. But as you move through the year, certain buckets are underspent and certain ones are overspent. So, we do these budget transfers to move money around, to flatten out the, those ups and downs and have a nice even budget. But again, we never defer from that original appropriated budget. So, what you see before you is a, is in a format similar to what we've talked about with the warrants, and it just represents each of those transfers. And I believe we said we would do this once a month, and I would report out to you guys each, each month as we go through the year until the budget's finalized, until it's spent in the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions, Mrs. Gallivan?
I would just make a motion to approve a total of 229,680 dollars. That has been transferred, as Mr. Fisher explained, within our, within our budgets from one category to another.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mr. Breen, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Would somebody like to take the gifts?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to the Boydin School from Bay State Textiles for 298.50 and Systemwide from Community Gardens for 105.50.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sirek, second by Mr. Breen, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. And finally, the minutes.
I'll take them, I'll make a motion to approve the August 24th, 2023 regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mr. Breen, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. We do have a need this evening for an executive session for the purposes of union and non-union negotiation strategies. Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to go into executive session for the stated purpose.
Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mrs. Kowditz, and we need a poll in the committee, so, Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sirek? Yes.
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 Yes, and myself, yes. So, we will go into executive sessions, 6-0-0. We will be returning to public session only for the purposes of adjournment, so with that, we wish you good evening.